To record work session to order, I have a roll. District one, Mr. Duffy.
Present.
District two, Mr. Bevill.
Present.
District three, Ms. Gilbert.
Present.
District four, Mr. Sis.
We would have a prayer by Mr. Ford.
Godfather, we're blessed to be here, but we are thankful for this county and for all the people in this county. Right now, we know that there is a bad storm headed to the southern coast of this nation. We pray that you'll be with those that are affected and just watch over them and guide them. We know that it's a powerful storm and it's an evidence of your power and how small we are. So, God, we pray that you'll just continue to watch over us and watch over them in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Would you join Ms. Gilbert in praying a quick?
I pray to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have anybody to speak other than Ms. Dombro? I think we'll recognize Ms. Teresa Bale.
Yes, I would, and bear with me, please. I'm not a speaker by any means. I'm just plain old Teresa. I'm retiring from the Jackson County Commission, retired in '09 with 25 years' service, 13 of which were in this office. So, I know what you guys are going through, what you face at this particular time of year. I transferred out to the Public Works Department where I was the office manager and I worked hand in hand with the engineer preparing those lovely budgets. And I hated nothing more than a red pencil mark because I was after doing all this figuring and handed prepare to the engineer who would take his little red pen and next morning it would be on my desk to do all over again. So, I know what you face during these times. I was asked to speak with you, the commission, in regard to the 2018 retirees' one-time bonus. According to some of the information I have, which is not a lot, the last one that we actually received was in 2014. There are some retirees, Ms. Doris here is one of them, that put in way more than 25 years.
Thirty-two.
And was a very dedicated employee, as were other retirees to the commission when they worked. All we could ask is that you please reconsider the 2018 one-time lump sum bonus. I know that you've had, and I hope that I'm speaking correctly, one opportunity to review it. And, you know, as I said, I know these times are hard. I know it's hard to get a balanced budget. And I do know also from working with the county that things come up that aren't covered in that budget and they manage to be handled one way or another. So, please, just reconsider if you have to take a vote, think, you know, think about us that devoted those years of service to the county. We live from day to day, just like your active employees do, and some of us live from that monthly paycheck to paycheck. So, that's all that I could say without, thank you, except thank you for your time.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Love having you come in. Just thank you for coming and thank you ladies for your years of service to the county.
Thank you.
Like you said, y'all have done a service to us. We want to do what we can do. We'll look at it and see what we can move forward on. We appreciate, like I said, everything y'all done for us. Let's see where we're at.
We appreciate, we appreciate you taking our time. Thank you, ladies.
Very much.
Next, two would like to recognize Mike Sims.
Good evening. For most of you who don't know me, and there's a couple that don't, I'm Mike Sims. I'm the county extension coordinator here in Jackson County. I've been here for, this is 2002. So, been here in the county doing extension work for a long time. One of the things that unfortunately, most of you didn't have an opportunity to come to the commissioners' luncheon for various reasons, I understand, because of the difficult time. But at that time, that's when we normally do our overviews of what we do. And one of the things that I mentioned to Mr. Ashburn and also Senator Livingston is that, you know, I'm of the mindset that you kind of fly under the radar and you come up when you need to. But I know we have a time that we really need to know and toot your own horn. And one of my old bosses told me a long time ago, "If you want to toot your own horn, it shall not be toot." And when you don't toot it, then, you know, people don't know who y'all and what you do. And so, I found it beneficial for us to come into our first work session, kind of let you know what it is that we do and some of the things that we bring to the county. That being said, Donna Sands, she's going to mention a little bit about 4H and then we'll talk about the trail and those kind of things. So, this is Donna Sands and she works in my office.
Thank you, guys, for having us. Can you take one of these nice rounders to the grand meal? Get one of those.
Get one of each.
Yeah. My name is Donna Sands and I do work for the Jackson County Extension Office. I've been there 10 years. Volunteered for about four or five before then. I have the privilege of working with our 4H youth along with other duties as assigned. Our core focus is ground farm and nature center programming, but I also do 4H as well. And Mr. Sims is going to talk a little bit more about the nature center in a moment. But this is what I'm handing out. As you guys are aware, funded for the 4H in-school program test through you all. And without your support, we would not be able to have an in-school 4H agent. I want to talk to you a little bit about the benefits of 4H. You can see here on the tally form, the benefits that we have there. The next page you're going to see is the green page, and that is our ES-237 form, which we're required by federal law to turn in. And as you can see, we have an active membership of, what, 564 students that are enrolled in 4H. If you flip that, you're going to see the breakdown of the grades that we serve. We pretty much touch all the ages, all the grades. We've engaged over 2,000 students through 4H just in this county alone. And we ask that you consider continuing that support for our 4H programs. A lot of the students that participate in the in-school 4H program would not be able to due to economic circumstances. This is sometimes the only club that they're actually involved in. They don't have the opportunity to go out and be part of the athletic programs simply because of our county being so large and they live out so far. So, being in school where the kids are at offers us a great opportunity to help those kids. I'm happy to report that we had 33 registered per county roundup, which we do on a Saturday. We're competing with softball beginning and all that. So, that's a little challenging. This year, we had tornadoes, so we managed to pull it off before the tornado hit, and luckily, we didn't have tornadoes. But we had nine actually advanced to regional congress, which was held at the Northeast Community College. And out of those nine, I am happy to report that Jackson County represented themselves very well. We had eight first place, no, seven first place, one second place, and one honorable mention. So, we did very well. We had one young man, the senior one and senior two. They advanced to state competition and he placed second in the state storytelling. So, some of these soft skills, public speaking, handshakes, etiquette, they learn this Robert Rube orders, which you guys practice every time you meet and come together. So, it's important that they need to learn to how to act in public. This next paper that you see here, this is part of our enrollment form, which looks like this. And on the back, there's a nice little compilation of things that they would like to learn about. And they, I'm only supposed to check three, but sometimes they check a little bit more than that. So, that's okay. We entered into our database and we have that. New this year, we have a form that we're going to hand out to our 4H sponsors, which is basically the in-school teachers, and let them do a little survey of what they want to see us, educational components that we bring to classrooms. They consider it a fun activity, but we are required to do the educational component. So, we actually do, I do usually science experiments. So, we kind of bring that into the classroom. We like to complement what the teachers are doing. Every one of those activities that they have a choice from are actually related to the curriculum grid, the state standards, and they meet those. So, if you have any questions, y'all feel free to give us a call. We'd be glad to sit down and talk to you more in depth of what we do. But it's a great program. I hope that you continue to support it. Mr. Sis, I know that your nephew, Mr. Dillon, I can't remember my little Dillon, because when I met him, he was just little. He's a little bit bigger now. But one of his first projects was a pumpkin that Ms. Beverly rolled in with truck dollies. And so, we saw him through and it was really, really nice. These kids are our kids and we take them under our wing and we really have an attachment to them. You can kind of see on the back some of the things that we've done. But it's a privilege to be able to go out and do this program and I hope that we continue to have the funds available for in-school 4H agents. So, with that, if you have any questions, let me know. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Sims and let him talk to you about the ground farm.
I have one question for you. You're showing 400-plus kids in kindergarten through fourth grade. What do you do with those students?
Clover, the clover bugs are technically, they're just really fun activities. They don't compete. When they get to nine years old, then they actually get to compete in the monthly projects. We have four projects and there's 18 of those. And what they do in school, they have two projects to choose from. And they have to bring that project and they have to stand up and present.
Are you in every school?
No, I wish we were.
Because I know no one comes to my school.
Yeah.
Bridgeport Elementary.
I think that if that is going to change this year, we're hoping. The 4H agent assistant position is 28 hours only. We kind of split that amongst our responsibilities. It is hard to do those programs, but we are trying to expand our schools. We increased it by, what, three schools last year?
You know, you got to take into consideration on 30-hour a week person. As large as the county is, by the time you get from one side of the county to the other, you know, we just really don't have the resources to do that because it's primarily funded by county commission. And we just don't have the time, the FTE, the finances to pay for a person to be in every school. So...
Have we not lost one employee? Did you do? And did we lose one employee that y'all had a few months ago?
We actually had an agent assistant that resigned in March, but that is contingent on this fund and whether that will be replaced or not. Until that time, Mr. Sims and myself will do that. We have another full-time regional extension agent. She has to split her time between Madison and Jackson Counties. She's actually going to pick up Bridgeport Elementary School because she's already doing Bridgeport Middle. And we've got four already scheduled. So, depending on the outcome of what you all decide, whether to continue a budget, that will be replaced. If it's not, then we can't replace it. But stand assured that we will do what we can with our time. I help with ground farm and nature centers. My core responsibility. Mr. Sims is the county extension coordinator. I also help with adult leadership. I also help with junior leadership. So, I'm glad to do, I feel it's a privilege to work with the extension office. We are basically a public service to the community. And I can't say that there's one person that doesn't take their responsibility to heart and give it all that we can. I'm born and raised here, so my kids come up through 4H. I volunteer for 4H. I see the benefit of it and it is a great program and we will do what we can to meet the needs of our kids. It's tough when you go into these schools and here are some of the things that we say. I could spend all that talking to you guys and it kind of brings tears to my eyes a little bit. But I wouldn't change it for the world. I said, "They give it their all and we give it right back to them." We squeeze a lot of time in what we have to do in 40 minutes or 90 minutes. And what we do in 90 minutes, we'll do it in 40. It may be a little bit hurried, but rest assured, we get it done.
All right. The other thing we got to have, I want to mention the ground farm and nature center. Ground farm and nature center is a property that's in Estefan, Plankton Valley. We acquired the property back in 2002 from Bob and Nita Head. And the whole purpose of the ground farm and nature center is to emphasize youth development, environmental science and education, and animal sciences. And one of the things that's a part of that is we just, we acquired a grant in 2016 from Adeka.
And the whole intent and purpose of the grant is to establish a walking trail. And we received $100,000 from Adeka to establish that walking trail. And when you go back and look at a lot of the stats that's going across, you know, outdoor recreation is one of those activities that people really get into. Birding is one, hiking is another, mountain biking is one. This trail is a multipurpose trail that is going to encompass hiking and mountain biking. And so, we're about 90% done with the trail. We're waiting for Adeka to come and sign off on it. One of the things that I want to mention in regards to this, when we talk about ROI, what I call return on investment. I know, I realize county commission doesn't get anything from tourism. They don't get tourism dollars. But you do get proceeds as people come into the county, purchase gas. They purchase groceries, et cetera, et cetera. And Paint Rock Valley is, you know, is one of those areas that hasn't been a whole lot of growth that's been going on recently. And so, one of the things that we do in giving back is we hire local people that's out there. We have two employees now that we've hired either through the grant or through the Tobacco Initiative Grant. We have this initiative about no smoking that you'll see a lot about here pretty soon. And so, also the walking trail. If you look at it, that's what it's about. Extinction has invested quite a few dollars into this. And we're talking about ROI. One of the first things that we did when we acquired the land was put in a water system. That water system that we put in cost about $130,000. But we had to give that water system over to the, to the local water board. But that's part of doing this is when you're trying to establish a center that's going to bring people in. And ACES is going to invest to purchase a building or build a building that we can have for outdoor recreation. Right now, we don't have anything but a home out there. So, when you have people that's going to come and camp and all those kind of things, you have to have showers and all of those things that are associated with that. And so, ACES, we're in the process of hopefully starting a camp or a campaign to build a building there that's going to encompass a kitchen, outdoor meeting space, and restroom facilities for young people as they go out to be able to shower and whatnot and those things. Right now, we are a hub for kayaking and a hub for sports fishing, which are 4H initiatives that we have across the state. And we have all the kayaks and all of the fishing materials and camping materials for young people to come out and be involved and get away from the handheld devices and get out where they don't have any internet and be involved in outdoor recreational activities. So, I want you to understand and have some idea of these are some of the kinds of things that we're doing and bringing into the county that is beneficial to the county and also beneficial to the aging population. Also, juvenile obesity is a problem in the state and help kids get back and enjoy outdoor recreational activities, which we don't, we don't have a lot of. So, if you looked at the article last Tuesday, I believe, the senator did a big article on some of the other things that we do in the county. You can take a look at that if you hadn't had an opportunity to look at. And it talks about a vast amount of things that we do that taxpayers are not aware of that are free of charge. Most of our services that we have are not of cost to the citizens of this county and of this state. So, I wanted you to see that. And the last thing, I passed this around, won't necessarily go through it, but this is a one-page that I think that Mr. Ashburn may have passed around. And you can kind of see, when you look at those numbers, what we call ROI again. We keep talking about that word, what that return on investment is when it comes to the amount of extension agents that are in this county that's working and based on the investment that we have. And you'll see what that is and what those numbers are. If you'd like to talk about that at a later time, I'd be glad to speak with you one-on-one or as a group or whatever the case may be. So, that's why we're here, kind of let you know what it is that we do. And any questions that you may have, we'll be more than happy to answer any question.
Michael Ford, I mean, I'm not going to hide no issue. I was born and raised over there, Plankton Valley. And neither ground farm, neither ground brothers, Nick Jane, Bob, all of them there. The only issue I had to done, I appreciate everything you've done right here, you mentioned my nephew, because I was in 4H growing up and dealing agriculture every day. The issue that I have with this, I think it, to me, as commissioner, it should be put into education side, Board of Education, which it is an education deal. And we've got so many needs here in this county. And $32,000 is not a whole lot. I know what you're coming to table about. But, you know, we, us, taking care of taxpayers' money, it's hard to come out. It's like these ladies here, retirees. And, you know, I said all the time to these other commissioners here, I said, "My thoughts are, we're spending tax dollars sending it over there each month, the Board of Education. This is an education deal." And, you know, with us giving a free ride to the building, if you're staged in, you know, it's kind of hard for me to sit right here and agree with some of this stuff, you know. Do we pass it on or do we make a decision what's worthwhile, you know? Because we've got so many things with this council on aging. It's indesperately. I mean, elderly folks, they can't even get their medication and stuff, you know. I'm just one voice, but I don't want to hide nothing and say, "Hey, why did these folks up in there?"
What I'll say is that when it comes to ACES, and we used to have agreement with the county commission across the state, that in every county in, across the state, the county commission has traditionally funded and provided housing for the commission, I mean, for the extension office as well as funding. Now, you can go back and, what is the county commission's chairman? What is his name?
Harkrey.
Well, prior, prior to him. Yeah. But all of the commissions across the state of Alabama, if you go back and do the research on it, they either pay for, all of them pay for housing, provide housing everywhere in the state. In all six or seven counties, they provide housing as well as if they can afford it, they provide an appropriation to the extension office.
Well, I understood that. We just came back from a conference and I talked to several of them. You know, when you're sitting out there, like some of them, it's got funding to do it with. And, you know, my issue was, well, you got Auburn and A&amp;M, two of the richest councils in here in the South. And I said, "I just, that's my personal thing. We've got other things that we got to look at also."
Do you have any other school districts that contribute to 4H? Or do you know of any in, you know, our neighboring counties or anything that...
Not school districts. School districts normally don't tradition, don't give allocation for 4H at all. Nowhere in the state that I'm aware of. And I've been doing this for almost 28 years. And of my 28 years, I've never known a school system to make allocation for the 4H program. Never.
But if the county and commission has always provided, schools have never been approached with it, probably haven't.
Well, they have. Even city governments have. But, you know, what 4H is, it's one of those activities, just like if you had a 4H club or if you had a science club or whatever, an enrichment program. That's kind of how they look at it from that enrichment perspective. So, but they've never done it. Yeah.
I don't want you to think I'm negative on it, but like I said, I might call it the first one. Just, you know, just looking at the funding and where we're at. And it's been on my mind a whole lot. I said, "I think this should be an education deal," which it is an education. It's just something to grow on, you know, whether or not on the road.
It's just, just something that hadn't, hadn't happened. But when you look at that one page, I want you to take a look at that and pay attention to see what that investment, that ACES is investing in this county. Now, that investment is not going on in any other county across the state. And so, I need you to make sure that you understand that when you look at those numbers and you look at the people that are coming in to serve this county, it's probably 80 to 90 to 1 on ROI. So, you give it back more than what that it is that you're putting in. But I want you to make sure you look at that. And those are true numbers.
When you reference ACES, who is that?
That's the extension, Alabama Cooperative Extension System. That's ACES. Used to be the, most people know that's the county agent, but it's, we changed and restructured back in 1995 and now we call it Alabama Cooperative Extension System.
We're the educational outreach for A&amp;M and Auburn. And the educational outreach is not limited to just youth. It's adults as well.
Well, what are your thoughts? I mean, while you're here, that's something, if we just said, "Hey, we don't have the funding." Is A&amp;M, Auburn going to be able to come up with this thing?
I mean, when you, when you look at what they're doing now?
Yeah, they ain't going to let that ground farm. I mean, that's the issue. They don't purchase the land. Well, they didn't purchase the land. They had to give it to them.
But when you look at that, we're talking ground farm. That's just one entity over here. We probably do four or 50 programs. So, the ground farm is a program. Then you talk about 4H is a program. You talk about row crops and ag is a program. So, that's one program that they still have agents that provide expertise. But when it comes to 4H, the way that's designed is if you're going to have an in-school program, you have to have funding from your local government to do that. And so, that's where, that's why a lot of these counties that don't have, we get down to black belt in those counties that don't have a 4H person. That's because of the funding. But the ones that really thrive and do well, they get funding from the, from the commission in order to be able to do that. So, to answer your question, if we don't have it, then, you know, these kids are not going to be able to have that program because between what I have to do with leadership and all the other things, I just don't have the time to do it. And that's why we have this person to provide these services.
Well, are you and Donna, I feel like you're going to be able to carry on? The other lady that, I mean...
Well, see, the thing is, is one, you know, I think that we want to try to see what we're going to do as far as this is concerned, and we'll hire somebody else if we get the funding for it. Right now, we have, we have a grant, Kelly Weber. Kelly used to work at Paint Rock Valley High School. He's doing a, he's working until September on a grant, Tobacco Initiative Grant. Ideally, I would like to hire him to move on since he's already in the system. So, it's just a matter of him transitioning in and doing 4H because he's already employed. But as of September 31 of this fiscal year, he'll be unemployed because the grant was only six months.
Do you have a card you could leave those?
I have one in the truck. I can bring it and give it back to you. Yeah.
Or you, do you have something? Bring it back and drop it off.
You have a question?
Any other questions?
We'd love for y'all to come out and sit down and talk a little bit longer. I know y'all have a little time. But we'd love to sit down and make y'all even as after hours.
We appreciate y'all coming to us and I apologize for not making it. I think this year was the first year I was on, but it's election year, budget time. You know, and we're, we all just part-time, you know, commission jobs, the afternoon. So... But we appreciate y'all. Appreciate what you do for the county and, you know, we'll continue to talk about it.
I understand. And, you know, the thing that I want to leave you with, you know, I understand the perspective of the funding. And if it comes down to it, something is better than that, you know. And so, so at least take that in consideration if that be the case. You know, and we'll take what we have and try to make the best out of it as we always have.
Well, I thank y'all for coming and presenting. And like I said, it's, it's hard to say no. The organization, I mean, everybody is in need of something, you know. And we, as the people, have got to make a decision what's best for this county. And I think y'all showed a...
Nothing else? We'll move on to discussion items. Thank you all and thank you, sir. Yeah. Thank you, ladies. Our first discussion item is the, I think we have the calendar upcoming. Thanksgiving, Christmas holidays, if we want to do anything outside of what we've already approved on the state calendar.
We were unable to give them that part for, for the July. I think we need to try to do something.
I agree. I think that's what we, we have said. We'll do something around Christmas, for the July.
In the middle of the week, and these are conveniently following for one year, idea.
No objection. We'll place that on next week's agenda for a...
No objection, we'll place that on next week's, uh, agenda, uh, for a, a recommendation and a motion. Next item, Southern Health Partners contract. I don't have a good, uh, here from Sheriff's Office to this.
I just said a little bit for it, yes, sir. Uh, we just got that, uh, about two days ago. And it's, it's our annual contract that, well, they do all, provide all the services at our jail.
We just need to review it, Tony.
Yeah, basically had a very small, I mean, it, when you're looking at the, the amount of money it cost us to run that service, it went up a fraction of a percent, which was about seven thousand for the total year.
We've actually searched and entertained some other offers in the past that.
We talked about that last year.
Yeah, and about two or three years ago, there's hardly anybody else that does this. And we did have a, an entity come by and do a presentation of, uh, I'm thinking about two years ago, two or three years ago. And it didn't provide the, the right, the type service that we have. And frankly, most counties don't have that. And, uh, but I just wanted to, to let you know that we did get, they were late getting it to us. Normally we get it toward the first part of the month. And it come in my email and, and matter of fact, come in the mail today. But, uh, it's, uh, again, about a several thousand, a dollar increase. And I sent you all an email recommending we just go in budget. And our budgeting numbers we're working on right now for next year, we just need to increase that, that expenditure on up about another 10,000 for next year's budget, can be my recommendation.
There's no further discussion on it. We'll put it on next week's agenda. Uh, our third and final item is Public Works Annual Bids.
Yes, sir. Thank you, commissioners. We solicit bids every year for supplies and materials that we use throughout the course of the fiscal year. And, um, those bids were, I think, August 20th, 2018. After review, you'll see a summary sheet there of what we are recommending and why. So, uh, most of these are, most of these are straightforward. And if you do have questions, the folders are there on the table. So, um, I wanted to present this now in hopes that if anything catches your eye, that we can answer any questions you may have or satisfy any concerns that there are. Most of these are straightforward and in the print sees you'll see either low bidder, only bidder, um, that represent that. There were a couple, as we usually have, that I would like to discuss and explain our recommendation. And the first one of those is on page two of the summary sheet, um, and it's purple side. They were, uh, this, the folder will detail how many bids, solicitations were mailed out. Um, there were a lot. We had three returned. Last year it was awarded to a unit chemical and they are the lowest bidder for most of the products this year also. So there were three on the return and they are lower than everyone else on most. The two exceptions are the ones listed there below their name, and that is two chemicals. One is two 4D and the other is glyphosate. A local supplier, the local co-op, is actually cheaper on both of those products. And they are both high-use products. So we are recommending to actually split that award to all the products except two 4D and glyphosate and keep those two local. Um, they're not much cheaper, but they are some, some are not cheaper. So, um, with the quantities that we will see, I think, um, I think that would be the wisest move to make as well as staying local. And I will say is that Helena is the other insect bid, so the, the only other bidder was out of state. Um, if there are any questions about any of those chemicals or why we're recommending that, um, please let's talk, let's talk further about it. One other, one other item here that I wanted to talk about, that's a little, little item of realm of normal, is the very last item on there, and it's liquid calcium chloride. So we use liquid calcium chloride for a couple of reasons. One is roadbed stabilization or road, or pavement preparation in our roadbed. The other is as a snow and ice material. It's a de-icer, so it's a supplement to our liquid brine. Um, it's used in small concentrations with that brine, but it lowers the freezing temp of that aqueous solution well below the freezing mark and allows us to operate in below freezing temps. Okay? So, um, this, the, the issue with return bids on this one comes in with new rules and transport. The, uh, electronic log laws affected our transportation, uh, or have affected transportation in general. But it, it plays in with suppliers that we relied on for this product. Um, there are terminals in Tennessee and there are terminals in South Georgia where we had received this product in the past. The South Georgia terminal, or the supplier that shipped from the South Georgia terminal, had historically been the cheapest supplier for this product. With the electronic logs, they are in a position to where they are just outside their range that they can still supply the product at the price. So when we solicited bids, it was sent to the folks that, that normally submit bids and, and others. But the two that were returned was the suppo, the supplier who uses the South Georgia terminal and the one from the Tennessee terminal did not have time to turn the bid materials around and submit the bid. We had just, last year, this was not, this was not an item that was bid out, you know, soliciting bids on for contract and was awarded. We still purchased it, we just didn't exceed, uh, public bid law levels with the purchase. So we knew then an idea of what the market was and what we could buy the material from. So when we receive our bids back and they're 25 cents a gallon higher than what we were just able to buy it for, we knew we had a problem. So what, what we are proposing is that we reject all the items. We resend these things out to the same people and we make sure that we have ample time. Uh, it, it wasn't actually our fault, I understand it from the conversation. I think documentation was mishandled, not turned in. Um, so we would like to resend that and make sure everything gets proper delivery and gets in the appropriate channels and reevaluate our bids because I think we stand to see a significant savings by everybody at the table, table of the day.
So it's not a state bid item?
It's not a state bid. It's not 200, I'll check that. Um, even, even if it were, it's most likely diff, you know, different for different locations. So we'd probably want it dialed in right, right to us. Are there any other questions about items I didn't talk about or anything in there that, that we need to have further discussion on? First limesong, you know, that's been controversial in your past. Um, it's pretty straightforward this year. I think a flip the folder would give a very, um, there, there is somewhat of a split on vitamin and circus treatment. Charles Watts, which was, um, a levator for vitamin circus treatment, that's on the chip ceiling. And then vitamin circus treatment, microsurfacing seal coat, uh, that's, that's different. That's microsurfacing, what we call microsurfacing. It's actually a slurry seal, so it's a different product. So that's, that's a split there. That's all I have, unless anyone has any questions about any of the products.
This is high-performance coal pipes, have we used this before here?
Yes, sir. That's, um, the, the way that works is we, we have a specification on the vitamin circus product and it's per gallon. That specification includes a pug meal. So whoever bids on this product, not only does their liquid have to meet that specification, but they also have to provide a pug meal for onsite mixing. That eliminates the expense of having to bring in a third-party hot mix plant or some other, you know, party to mix the material. But that is the same provider that we have in, that we've had.
I'm not sure about anybody else's opinions, but I agree with the split on the herb side. And to resend the bids or to check the bids again on that last one. I think I'm pretty sure it's unanimous. Good idea, Campbell?
Anything else on angle bids? Nothing else, we'll ask for further remarks. Uh, Mr. Campbell, you have anything to leave that out? I said, thank you. Uh, Mr. Ford? Mr. Smith? Mr. Gilbert?
The only thing I have is on 4H, going back to that old, so. When I was younger, you know, my grandpa had cows and I grew up having the milk cows and you know, all this kind of stuff. But my kids didn't, without 4H, they wouldn't have had any exposure to it because I'm not a farmer. I don't like it. You know what I mean? I don't want to have that, I don't even want to grow a garden. So, so my kids, the only exposure they had was to that. So they got a lot of these kids that, look at these numbers, 500 and something kids, that's the only exposure they got to this. So that's one thing we need to keep in mind. I'm, I'm a base, you know, balanced budget, but that's something that we just need to consider, I think. It's like, yeah, that's the only exposure we have to. That's all.
Um, I don't have anything to add. Motion to adjourn?
Make a motion?
Motion taken, I'll turn it to you.